The first one I let it slide, I'm not gonna let it slide this time. I have something to say and to complain is the lease was with me and the Village of New Paltz. The county had nothing to do with it. The state of New York funded it, DOT. I did not give a letter from DOT saying they're terminating the lease. The lease is being terminated between me and the Village of New Paltz. That should be clear. And Village of New Paltz put the moratorium in place. That should be clear.
So before we close the public hearing, can we just make clear for the board and the public what happens next in this process? Do we have to do a public hearing first?
Sure, we'll make a determination about how we want to respond to the hardship. We may not have to do that this evening. So I have a motion on the table to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's say your pledge. Start our regular business meeting. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag, to its banner, to the public, for which it stands, in the vision of the liberty of justice for all. So a couple of items that I wanted to add to the agenda before we approve this agenda. I wanted to add a discussion about adding the water project Q and A that the town board adopted and put on their website. Second additional item, having the village participate in the career fair or the volunteer fair. That's taking place at SUNY on September 11th from 1:00 to 4:00. Another item, I wanted to comment on a fee that is in our fee schedule related to Section 129 of our housing standards. That was all that I had. Katie, was there anything else that we wanted to?
Thank you to Andrea Russo. And that David Gilmore would like the board to consider pulling 10 and 11 from the last question.
Two things also. Pulling 10 and 11?
Yes.
Well, number 10 is the, well, I would actually like to go over those publicly and explain why we're, what we're doing with each of those items. So number 10 is the proposed NBR district, the district formerly known as B3. That's number 10, correct?
Yes.
And then, and this is-
No, I'm sorry, number 10 is the 212-23 site plan review application procedures as referred by the planning board following 7/21/15 meeting.
Great, okay.
And number 11 will be the discussion on the planning board, A18 review of the NBR zoning text.
I would like to keep the NBR on the agenda and then remove the discussion of 212-23. A couple of other, the only, the only other thing that I wanted to do was for Deputy Mayor Rossler because she will need to be excused this evening. We're just gonna change the order of the agenda. So the presentation by the Lalo group, I wanted that to be first. And then I wanted to remove, since Rebecca will most likely be leaving, I wanted to remove from the agenda-
13.
The, the discussion of proposed parking and zoning changes. But I wanted to keep on the agenda the discussion of parking at Elting and Hasbrook. Because those were two separate items, correct?
Tim, I will note that on your email I'm asking for the thank you to Andrea Russo that you also want to discuss a replacement for it. If that was your email, whether you still want to have a discussion this entire week or not.
Yeah, let's, let's add EPC secretary to the agenda. And I also wanted to add to the agenda that the village will be looking to hire a new planning and zoning secretary. And Don, you said you had a couple of items.
Yeah, we received some information from the town building committee. And I just want to share a little bit of that on, with, with the rest of the board. And with regard to the public hearing we just had, I'd like to set a date. I would like to address that at the end of this nice meeting and executive session, but if the deputy mayor will be there, that's probably not proper. But I'd like to, like to address that in a timely way so that we could set a date and move quickly on having that conversation among ourselves. Would you like to do that? I guess I could make a motion to that in fact, but I'm just throwing it out there. Like to, this issue's been twisting out in the wind for a while. I'd like to resolve it one way or the other.
The hardship issues.
Yeah.
You want to, you want to plan on discussing that on, or making a final determination on 9/9?
As soon as possible, yeah.
Great, that's our next meeting.
I have one thing. 16, the discussion of village code regarding large trucks. We are waiting for David to weigh in on which additional streets we would include, so I don't think we're ready to discuss that again tonight.
Okay, so we'll pull that from the agenda? Now I have no idea the order of this agenda.
Katie will straighten it out.
Click highlighters.
So we're, are we good with the agenda? additions and subtractions?
Hopefully.
Yes. And back to what Don is proposing, being that it would be an executive session item, if there was a need felt for a special meeting, I would be open to that.
Regarding the, the request for hardship?
Yes. Just to give us additional time in order to make a better informed decision.
So we could, yeah, so we can potentially do that before the 9th, too?
Yes.
And then we could, yeah, that's fine.
Tim, I respectfully request that the bill you make a cut in announcement at the appropriate time.
So that's something you're adding to the agenda?
It doesn't have to be added to the agenda. I could even just begin it in public comment. Like, it's just regarding scheduling, I wanted to add.
Okay. So we are okay with this agenda?
Yes.
And Katie's gonna help with the order?
Yes.
Is there a way to turn off the microphone? It's really hard to hear. It's very loud.
I think it's sound.
Can you turn this white noise machine off?
So could I hear you right that you're gonna vote on the moratorium on the 9th?
No, the hardship, the hardship.
The hardship on the 9th?
Yeah. At the latest, we might. As Rebecca suggested, we might have a special meeting to, because the discussion can also occur in, in executive session.
Oh, the vote doesn't pass. I thought the vote happened during-
It will happen publicly, but we might have a special meeting to discuss, to discuss the hardship.
Okay, so the issue of vote on it would be September 9th?
Yes.
I think there is a 15-day time limit in the North Lauren for our votes. The time is 14 days, but it doesn't leave any room for error there.
Well, we're talking about it. Do we want to try and have a special meeting? I mean, do you want to meet next Wednesday?
That would be fine with me.
That's fine with me.
Make a motion that we have a special meeting to address the hardship, the hardship issue a week from tonight, beginning at 7:30 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I can do that.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept this agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment?
I just wanted to remind everyone that the Board of Trustees has changed their normal schedule for the month of September and that the Board of Trustees will meet on Wednesday, September 9th, and then again on Wednesday, September 16th, which is a change from what would, which you would have expected would have been the 9th and the 23rd, been an observation of yank before. We will not be holding a meeting.
7 o'clock or 7:30?
7:30 is our regular scheduled, regular scheduled meeting time.
16, second.
And it will be published in the newspaper.
Anyone else, public comment? Donna? Just state your name.
Okay, Donna Liebman, Plains Road. I'm here regarding the border issue on Plains Road, proposed border district number five. I would just like to comment that, I know it was a local official, I don't know who it was, so I'm sorry about that. We stated sometime recently that there were a few families on Plains Road who were opposed to the proposed border district. And I'd just like to point out that on Plains Road, if you drive down, there are over 25 signs expressing people's feelings of opposing the border district. Just to get a little bit more of a reality check on that as to that previous history. And that's all. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is coming alive from my interview. And I'm here to follow up on the comments I made at the last speech when we think about the dog attack and a lot of other patients that occurred just two days ago on Monday. I was, and he's the same person. Turns out that he doesn't only have a dangerous dog, but he also systematically takes his dogs to defecate on somebody else's property. And he does this on a regular basis. Dog of origin was notified and she's going to talk to the owner directly, but it seems too good to pick out of me. It's a public health issue, I give. But then I'm still within the house where this occurs. They are, you know, complaining about, I've been talking to the owner of one of the buildings, Paul McHale, who has seen him himself acting in this manner. And he said he picked up that he was not permitted to talk to this. I have photographic evidence, if it's necessary, to show him. And I just like to express that on top of the dog of origin, talking to this man, his name and address, I am sorry, someone who took it. It would be, I think, to the which is interesting, the board and the code enforcement officer who comes from the collection.
Thanks.
And just one more thing, how many other residents feel unsafe with this man on the street? I've been just talking to one person today without threatening herself, like in the context, seeing another small, who was almost attacked by this person, so I'm very excited.
Okay.
Could I make one comment about this?
Yes.
I'd just like to assure you that, that we've begun to look into this and there have been some communications from the building department about who is authorized to ticket in such a case, and we'll look into it further.
Any other public comment? John?
I'm John Starr, on Grove Street. I'm the chair of the Village of New Paltz Environmental Policy Commission. I'm here unofficially just to make some comments about some things that are before the board today. The first point I wanted to make was about volunteerism and the critical role that volunteerism plays in our community. I want to show you guys a document that was created by a volunteer on the EPC. It's a list of recycling areas that are in very close proximity to the Village of New Paltz. This document was created by a researcher on the Environmental Policy Commission, and that person is a volunteer. It's full of helpful information about where to recycle different things. I just showed this to you as an example of the kind of work that volunteers in this community do, and I'm humbly urging that we have some presence at the volunteer fair coming up in September, hoping that you can facilitate that in some way. Sort of tying into that point, documents such as this, we hope to have housed on the EPC webpage on the Village of New Paltz webpage on our commission spot. But it's important, I think, that our websites and the hours and the agendas are all carefully housed and open to the public. And beyond that, that videotaped evidence of our meetings continues to happen. It came to our attention that we would no longer have a videographer, that there would be videotaping by some kind of mechanized videotaping machine, but that we would not actually have a physical human being that would, that would do that work. The work that's done by our videographer goes beyond simply recording meetings. That person also has to choreograph various other duties, such as getting those things to people to type up for meeting minutes and so forth. I know a lot of people, many of them are in the room, fought to have open government in, in this town, and it's a principle that I think we all hold pretty dearly. So I'm hoping that we can continue to have somebody working in that capacity, and I think that's something we'll discuss. The last thing that I wanted to mention was there'll be a presentation about a project that's coming up, that's being proposed. And I would humbly request that, you know, I know you guys have to wear a lot of hats, but certainly the environmental hat is, is one of the many things that you guys are tasked with considering. We worked hard, many people worked hard, I was the one, many people did, work hard on daylighting the stream here in the park, and, and that stream, to my understanding, runs through the property that's being discussed today for the hotel development. So of the many considerations that I'm sure you'll carefully think about, I would just hope that environmental issues are, are among the things that, that you keep in mind.
Anybody else before we close? Andrea?
Andrea Russo, Henry Court. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I came tonight because I wanted to hear the discussion about the new proposed way you're going to videotape meetings and to see what it is you have planned, but I, as many of you know, I served as co-Don, and I co-chaired the Public Access Committee for many years, which was a joint committee with the town and the village. And that committee is inactive at this point, which I'm hoping in the future will change. And I just wanted to offer, if, if this is, I wanted to offer my knowledge of the history of the struggle we had to kind of get things to where they are today. And, you know, I'm certainly available for consultation if it would be helpful at any time in the future to just, you know, make sure that we keep the quality of public access television and, and everything that goes along with it, you know, uploading to the internet and keeping the schedule on, you know, the pit and Facebook and all of that.
Anybody else? I think Jeff, you.
Jeff Logan, Town of New Paltz, and Deputy Supervisor. And I just wanted to thank you for adding the water. I thought it was gonna be on it. Dan and I are here with me, so for the question and answer, we've got a large group out there. So obviously you want to get them done, but if you want to move the question and answer up, Dan and I will stay and, if you have any questions on the Q and A on the proposal of Water District 5 and also on 3. And I believe you might only have one more meeting, actually maybe now two, to a discussion meeting. But also on Thursday, September 10th, at the community center, we have scheduled a meeting at 7:30 PM for discussion of Water District. I know Tom was there for a presentation and also for, so I mean, just make sure everyone's officially away. It will not be a town board meeting, it will be a joint meeting, it's an information meeting for the residents in proposed 5, which was about 80 residents there, and also the expansion of 3. And to give more resources to all of your residents, the 7,000-plus users here and 450-some users we have in Town Water Districts.
I can respond to that in that, I shared that September 10th date with our board to, to see who's available. I, I plan to be there. I also had asked your board if we could do a joint meeting, even like a short, special joint meeting, to discuss the municipal center, so we can discuss that later.
Absolutely.
But I, I thought, you know, if we were all in the same nearby vicinity, that might be a great opportunity to, to have that conversation as a, as a joint meeting as well, just-
Absolutely, yeah. I know, if I know, if you couldn't get people to, even I know tomorrow, next week, your board couldn't make it, so we will get it. Let's get it sooner than later. But if you guys want to move it up, Dan and I stay then, and maybe after this, do you guys want to move up the Q and A and the water, or?
I'm okay with that if we do Lalo for-
Yeah, you have a huge group out there.
We have a huge group and, and we have a, a deputy mayor who needs to take off shortly. So if we move Lalo first and then Water, Q and A afterwards. Donna, you had another?
Could I have a question about the September test meeting, which I had already been aware of for this town board meeting? Is that going to be a presentation, or is there going to be opportunity for questions from the board?
Yes. Yes, all.
Which one?
Yes, yes, all. It's gonna be a presentation, and yes, yes, everything, absolutely. And in attendance at it, too, we're going to be having, well, the town board there, we'll have Russell Erdeni, who's a hydraulist there, we'll have DEP representatives there, we'll have Dave Plaza there, we'll have Jill Moreyeller there, we'll have Dave Mersey there. So we'll have attorneys, engineers, and hydraulics all there, I will include the gas factor there.
Jeff, I'm sorry, because the board, because this board is considering going for purposes of record-keeping, locally videotaped?
Absolutely.
Great, good to know.
Any other public comments before we close it up? Nope. Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First discussion topic, the Lalo folks, maybe they can be alerted that we're ready for them?
Can we turn the air conditioner back on?
It's not really, it's just a white noise machine. It doesn't actually cool anything.
Well, I want some cool.
It does, but we'll turn it off. It hasn't worked.
So how do we want them to situate themselves?
That's fine.
Yeah, that's actually best for the cameras.
Would this be of any use to them?
Yeah.
Ryan, is he just, sorry, is that his mic's removal, he might want to help.
Can you even pull it off the stand? Would that help?
Yes.
So it's extra clear? Do you have enough slack, Donna?
We have a handheld microphone for whoever is going to be speaking.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Capello. I'm an attorney with Jacobowitz &amp; Gubitz, and I'm here on behalf of Luis Martinez and his Lalo group. Luis is a longtime village resident, went to high school here in New Paltz, has his business office here in the village, and we're here to present what we believe is a very exciting opportunity to do a really state-of-the-art development in your core business zone. You're gonna see a lot of maps here regarding the property, but I think most of you know the property as the pit, and it's right there. So, I mean, it's not usual that I can just look out the window and, and see the property. But this is a 2.4 acre parcel right adjacent to the village hall here that has been, stayed undeveloped for as long as I can remember. I was here personally about 10 years ago, representing a group that was going to do a workforce housing project there. This is a very different project, but what we're here is the first step, and it could potentially be a long journey if this board is interested in pursuing it. We will need some zoning relief or amendments and considerations from this village board, and that's a discretionary action. So really what we're here today is to present the project to you. I have Justin Dates. Justin is another New Paltz High School graduate here, and he's with Mazer Consulting, who are the engineering firm, representing the applicant. And I also have Jason Anderson from Fire and Anderson, the architects, proposed architects for the project, and they will present the site plan and the building elevations to you of what the proposal is, and then I will let Mr. Martinez speak to your board and discuss the vision. Once you see what the vision is, then I'll sum up with a discussion of how we could work together to potentially achieve that vision if you think it's worthy of continuing to pursue it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Justin to present the site plan.
Thank you, John. Again, Justin Dates from Mazer Consulting. I'm a landscape architect with the firm. What I'll do is just kind of take you through the, the site, existing site elements, and then also just the, an overview of the proposed project, and then pass it on to, to Jason to go through the architecture. As John mentioned, we have here is an aerial of the project site. It is, you know, intimately known as the pit by most locals here. North, we're on Hasbrook Ave, I'm sorry, Platic Hill Ave, south would be Hasbrook Ave, and then we have Elting Avenue on the, the western side of the, the project site. So it's bordered by those three roads, along with the village facilities to the east, and then also municipal parking butts up against the northern perimeter of the, of the site. It is about 2.4 acres in size and currently vacant, as, as most know. And there's access to, to village utilities, water, sewer, drainage, that type of infrastructure adjacent to the site and the existing roadways. Just from a topography standpoint, there's quite a bit of grade change over the existing site. It's about 32 feet going from east down to west, hence the pit designation. And you'll see how the design of the project kind of plays into that existing topography. So what I'll do now is just bring up the, the site plan, which I believe all the board members have in their packets. Just to orient everyone now, north is gonna be to your right, so Platic Hill is up on this side. The village facilities are down at the bottom, and then Hasbrook Ave is, is down here. So what you're looking at is the, the property itself is about a U shape. The, the building facility itself occupies a good portion of the, of the project site, about 1.6 acres. And what it starts out with is a two-story parking garage. And there's about 400 spaces total in that. We have discussed the potential of providing some of those spaces as public parking, because as you can see, this is the municipal lot up here. We would have an access point into the garage at that location. There's a through road from Platic Hill down to, to Hasbrook for access to the main entry to the, to the facility. And then there are also two other access points along Hasbrook, one for service, and then also another ingress egress for the parking garage. So coming up out of the, the parking garage, we have two, two buildings, one on the north and one on the south side of the project. The northern is a condominium building. We have 81 units in that condominium building. It's about eight stories tall. Then in between the two buildings, we have an atrium area and an entry foyer, and we would go down to the, the proposed hotel. Now, the hotel is 96 rooms. The first floor would incorporate a conference or banquet area. And then the, the rooftop has a restaurant and spa. So the, the hotel rooms themselves are in between those floors, and that is six stories in height. So some of the other amenities that, that we've included into the, the project here, what we have is a, a, a public promenade, or from Hasbrook up to municipal parking, we have this meandering walkway that goes through the site. So we're trying to promote, you know, pedestrian connectivity into the village. So we're trying to promote, you know, pedestrian connectivity into the village. There's a lot of exciting pedestrian projects going on right now that this could be linked to. We have connections down through town to the rail trail, the river to ridge project is going on. So there's a lot of exciting things going on that, you know, we're looking to, to add into that pedestrian connectivity into the, into the village. We also have reflecting pool for aesthetics. We also are looking to do gardens. So these areas here, you don't see any surface parking on the project. It's because it's all within the garage, and we're also looking to do intensive green, green roofs on these. That would be over the garage, lower garage areas, and also we have a couple on top of the, the roof for the condominium building. So you can see we incorporate those types of things. From a stormwater standpoint, we look to introduce those or stormwater gardens, some type of biofiltration, things like that, to help offset the impervious area that's added to the, to the project, but...
Can we ask you a couple of questions, or you want to, is that okay, or you want to?
No, it's, yeah, we can.
So John had brought up the, the question about daylighting or keeping streams open to the sky. The, the past administration worked hard to daylight the stream here in Peace Park.
Yep.
So that stream, for all intents and purposes, is, is open to the sky in the pit. So is there an opportunity to keep it open to the sky with, with this type of project?
Yeah, so the, the area you're talking about with coming down through Hasbrook through here?
Right, parallel to Hasbrook.
Yep, yeah. That's something that we could look into. Right now, we haven't got into developing the full drainage grading plans and things like that. We do have quite a bit, as I mentioned, quite a bit of topography to deal with, and that drainage ditch does kind of come down into the site here.
So that's a possibility that could potentially be a landscaped feature?
We could look into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, no problem.
Yeah, I'm just, it seems like such a tall building. Is there a way you could fly balloons very early on in the process so people can see where is it, the, the escape? Is that, that's an issue that often comes up, I find, a little too late in the process, and you bring that this early, it's possible.
We understand, and we, you know, I've already been in discussions, this is our initial presentation of the vision you're going to create here. Jason, the architect, he's been looking at that, certainly if the board wants to consider it before, where this project is something that you think generally could become official, then we would have to prepare all the stuff, and then that would be at the beginning, we would have to go a full, you know, environmental review, a full site plan review to look at, drainage issues, and we're certain, given the height and given the request, if it don't change, you know, visual analysis would be prepared to, you know, to locate the slope and look at the impacts.
Right. Rachel and I probably should have explained what we're doing here process-wise. So this is a, a general introduction to this concept before our board, but we're also encouraging the, this potential applicant to make sure that they're dealing with our, our planning board and building department, and submitting a pre-application to our building department. So that's, that should really be done in parallel with this, but this is really just an introduction to the concept. That's what we're trying to do here, but I absolutely encourage any sort of concerns or questions that you might have to share them with this developer, share them with our building department, so, you know, we can get ahead of some of those potentially troubling issues. So, but I, so I encourage you guys to continue with your presentation, so we can move on with our evening.
Sure, okay. Just a couple of points, just wanted to make, in the narrative, we, we touched on how we think this development of this parcel with our proposal here hit some of the comprehensive plan goals, those being looking for a broad range of housing options, you know, with the condominium style in the downtown area, promote tourism development, make downtown a dominant feature of the region. You know, we see this as being quite the destination point, and feel that there's a, there's a need in the area for lodging, you know, with being close proximity to SUNY, some of the events that they take place, we're hearing people are traveling to Kingston or Poughkeepsie for lodging, for those type of things, and feel that the, there's a need or there's a warrant for, for a hotel facility in, in New Paltz. And then also improve opportunities for community activities. So we have a banquet space, we have the gardens, things like that, so to add into those as, coming from the comprehensive plan, you see hitting those, those four goals. And then also, the project itself is a, is a prime example of infill project and not sprawl. I think that that's, it's been sitting vacant for quite some time, and Mr. Martinez is going to speak a little bit more to that, but, you know, his vision, how it hits, hits these points, and, and is the proper use essentially for this parcel in the downtown area. So I think with that, that kind of is the overview of the project, I could turn it over to Mr. Anderson, and he could talk about the, the architecture.
Very good. So again, my name is Jason Anderson. I'm a registered architect and with Anderson Design Group. Just think to, to maybe, I know there's a number of scenes, some of the elevations already, but maybe we could just walk through the site with one other aspect, just to see how we started to develop the site and, and why we, we went the direction we did, because that really plays into the building. Just a couple of, of points that Justin hit on. One thing I think that's deterred people from the site was the fact that the gray change is so significant, very difficult to deal with. However, what happens when you're dealing with any sort of density is you, you need to take that into consideration and then come up with a way to try to use that to your advantage. And so that's what we tried to do here, because the issues that we all know in New Paltz, we've got issues with parking, issues with traffic, and how do you do a development that has any sort of density where you can control that within your own development? And so that's the approach that we took here. So just to talk a little bit about these, these entry points, what we determined early on, and this was really Luis, was that everything that we did had to be contained on-site. So if it was parking, if it was offloading of any, any vehicles for deliveries, had to be offsite, or onsite, not offsite. So that was critical. So what we did is we took advantage of the slope, and with these parking garages, we took care of all of our parking, plus extra. We ended up being able to fit two tractor trailers for any sort of deliveries into the building for unloading and loading, and we accessed the, we created the levels in such a way that the parking are accessed directly from existing grades. So there's no other development required at the, the different grades. And then put the building up at an elevation that worked, again, right at the existing grades on either end where we had that drive-through. So that was the approach, and what we looked at was when it came to impervious area, you'll see quite a bit of greenery on here, and it's shocking when you think of what Justin said about the amounts. So we've got 96 hotel rooms, which is our minimum to be able, for this project to be financially viable. We have, I think it's 81 residential units, and yet you see the amount of green space, and the way that we did that is we said, rather than trying to create more, more sprawl, even on its own site, let's bring it to one area, let's create the density in one area, be able to have rooftop gardens, be able to have reflecting pool, outdoor patios, different space, some of it public, some of it for the hotel, and then be able to do that all within the site. So Justin mentioned this promenade that comes through, so that, that's for the public to come off of that, that lot and to be able to walk through. Now, if you think about it, the hotel and everything to the east, that's part of this property, and that's part of the development. These gardens, our anticipation at this point is to have one that's accessible for the public and one that's for the residents. So that basically, if you were to think of what we're doing, we're taking this property and we're really giving public access through it and usability of that property as well. We think that's going to solve a couple of problems. One, the cut-through actually through this parking lot that you see if you're for three minutes, to be able to create that access right to the downtown from the college. So that's really the approach that we took to get to, to this point, and that really developed that into the building. So we'll take a look at, yeah, let's just go with that one. Okay. So here's the first shot, and this is, if you're in a drone hovering up, you are, where are you, west looking east at this point, right? So behind the building would be this building that we're standing in now. So what you see in this elevation here, we've got the six stories of the hotel, and so what this is, the first story is a banquet hall, a cafe, lobby, we've got only four stories of the hotel itself, and then you've got the rooftop restaurant and spa. So that's what's, what's in the, the hotel itself. One of the interesting things about the, the hotel is it is, should I get the numbers right, 64 feet above grade. So to speak to your point about the, the height of the building, so at grade, which we could assume is just a little bit below this parking lot, 64 feet. So let's give that a little bit of perspective. Vanderburg Hall there, the gutter of that roof, not the eve, not the cupola, but the gutter where the wall meets the roof, is only six feet lower than that point right there. So to give you a little perspective based, and so even, we're about five feet lower than that. So we went and measured there, and that gives you what, what this height is. The way that we were able to get that many stories in that height was by dropping or by creating more contemporary structure that has concrete plate floors, and that allows us to not have the depth that you have in a traditional building, and so we were able to drop 12 feet from what a typical building would be of this height, or of this amount of stories. So that gives you an idea of what the hotel is, and then we've got our lobby here. This is the, the same construction, but a complementary structure. This is our condominium units. What we did here is we dropped it one story. So when you think we were talking about eight stories, one of those is depressed into the ground. So there's gardens down below, but it, essentially, we don't have the second level of parking down there. Instead, we brought the building down to try to deal with, address height issues there. What you're looking at here, this is the two-story parking garage that you see, so the entire thing would be screened to be enclosed. These are the two gardens that we saw in the site plan that we had there. You'll see the reflecting pool a little bit there. You step up from the promenade into the courtyard, which is part of the hotel. And let's take a look just at, yeah, I think we'll just do this one. So before, we were looking as if you're in the air, which nobody's ever going to see that because of that elevation, unless you're standing on a roof of one of the houses. This is eye level. So right now, if you were, if we took this, this courtyard came out, and this is at eye level now looking up. So here, we've got the undulating wave of the concrete that, that is the hotel, and then in the background, we have the condominium unit. And that's essentially the architectural components of it. The, the materials that are being used here are glass, concrete, stone, and wood. That's basically it. That's what you see as the exterior of the building. The purpose of it was to use materials that are sustainable, that don't have a large carbon footprint, that are sourced locally, and those are the, the points that we were trying to hit in this. We have got to deal with water, we have to deal with, with the rain gardens that we have, capturing roof water, roof drainage, those are all components that Luis has committed to and, and what we've discussed, including solar panels and such, but we have to get to, to that point in the design. Anything else that, any questions or?
Hi, Luis Martinez from the Lalo Group, local developer and constructional management. I have my office here in New Paltz, and I just want to talk about the project. I'm presenting this project to the village of New Paltz because I, I think it's a really need for the village of having a hotel downtown because of the SUNY New Paltz, and not only that, to get a better use to the pit. I seen the pit for so many years, baking, and I think it's about, even if I don't do it, somebody else is going to come and do it. If, I don't know if it's going to be in town or out of town, but why not, you know, present it to the, to the village and, and see what, what we can come up to. We're going to be, if this goes forward, we're going to be creating over 300 temporary jobs and 100-plus permanent jobs. So, and what else can I say? I, I mean, I hope we go forward and, and move on to this project. So I don't really have much to say, they said everything I had to say. So any questions?
Well, I would just take it and wrap it up and then open up for questions to the real reason, you know, why we're, why we're here tonight. As we discussed, to accomplish this vision, the process would be, I believe, the best process, there may be other ways to accomplish this, is for the village to consider a zone change. This property is located in the B2 zoning district, but if you look at your zoning as it relates to any commercial use of this property, really all that could be developed would be a small, another strip mall comparable to the strip malls you have on, you know, the intersection of 32 and 209, 299, et cetera. So this is something we believe is, is different and actually is closer to what your comprehensive plan looks at to doing a core downtown business, but it would take your board doing a zone change. So as an attorney, I go before boards quite a bit and also represent boards. Sometimes I look at the code and say to my client, code says you can do this, you're entitled to do this by right, you go through the environmental review, the board has to approve it if we mitigate everything. Here, you don't. I mean, being clear, this requires you to do, consider a zone change, which is at your discretion, which is, while we're here tonight, we understand that to accomplish this project and to accomplish the zone change, we need to do a lot more work. We need to do a lot of engineering work, we need to do the architectural studies, we need to do the visual analysis to show we can mitigate the damages. But if this board says and looks at this project and said, this is not our vision, this is not something we want to see in New Paltz, then I don't believe Mr. Martinez wants to spend the money going forward. If you think that this is something that could be a possibility, it could be something that you can embrace, then we go to the planning board, we formally petition you, I gave you a draft of what we believe is a local law to amend your zoning that would create a new special permit use for a mixed-use development in the B2 zoning district, you would review that. Obviously, your planner, your attorney would assist you, we would begin the environmental review process and the environmental, you know, studying the environmental impacts of the project. Your planning board would have to eventually, if the zone is changed, grant site plan approval and special exception use for this project. So they would review it, they could be the lead agency, you know, under seeker, you could be the lead agency under seeker. There's a lot of work to do, but this is the first step, and if the first step is, guys, we just don't, we don't see your vision, then please let us know. If it's something that you agree with us, that it could be a real attractive, something unique, New Paltz has a lot of diverse elements to it, I think this is something that is not there, you know, you don't want anything to be the same all over, but this is something that we believe can be a unique development in one of the few open spaces that you really have in your core that can not only provide the tax ratables... have in your core that can not only provide the tax ratables and the jobs we discuss, but also can bring more people and a different type of people to New Paltz, potentially bring conventions or meetings to New Paltz where people will not only have the spa service or maybe eat at that restaurant, they'll also walk around your town, go, you know, visit Minnewaska, visit Mohawk, spend money in your restaurants, spend money in your, you know, businesses and really help enhance it. And it will also provide an amenity, you know, for the villages, a cut through, as an attractive place to walk through, help potentially alleviate your traffic problems. So that's where we are. So with that, I'll open it up now to, I'll give the meeting back to you if you want to create questions.
Does anyone have any questions right away?
Actually, I do. Yeah. I'm just curious as to any, for lack of a better word, studies that you've done regarding the traffic in the area. I'm sure you're aware, there's a large church.
Right.
Basically across the street. There's the park, and both are fairly high usage in terms of traffic as well as, you know, just the number of people who rotate out throughout the week. And I'm just wondering how the traffic generated from your building would affect the traffic that already exists?
Well, I think the initial answer is this place will be a destination, so people will probably come and park their cars and then maybe go up to, you know, Minnewaska. But we understand that we'll have to do a full traffic analysis. Mazor has tried, you know, they're a full-service consulting firm, so we would prepare a full traffic study. And if there are some improvements that, you know, need to be made, that can be made, we would certainly, you know, incorporate. We think this would, you know, help with the parking situation, but that's certainly visual analysis, traffic, stormwater. We understand we have to do, you know, all of that and provide you the answers. So I don't want to say here, no problem at all, but, you know.
Yeah. With that, also rescue services.
Sure.
You know, emergency services.
Yeah, the fire department, have to make sure they can access it and, you know, but all of that will be part of our studies. I mean, if we do go forward and petition you, we would provide you right at the onset with a list of the studies that we think are necessary. You would review it and tell us. We agree those are all necessary, plus this or, you know. So that, we understand that's certainly an issue.
Thank you. Anybody else, questions from the board?
Well, I'd like to say that we all know that you know that this is not a one-step process. That this is, if this is going to go forward, it's going to go through a number of iterations and interchange between your team and our board, if it's going to go forward. I, for one, would like to say that I would much prefer to see something special and interesting and new and residential that brings jobs rather than to see the pit stay the way it is now. I welcome notions of development that would enhance the center of New Paltz.
Don, you want to ask anything?
Well, I don't necessarily want to ask anything. I think you were looking for some general indications of people's first impressions. So I should probably first disclose whatever bias I have, not when I knew or this particular project. But I have a conversation with my wife many times as we're coming from Minnewaska toward the village, and we look at the HAV, which checks up over the tree line and say, how did that ugly thing ever ruin our skyline? And the answer is, well, because they didn't have to follow village building codes. And I just don't know that this is the sort of thing that has been envisioned for the downtown village. I still, and we can talk about this in our joint meeting with the town, I still envision that to be, as was recommended in two thousand seven, the ideal place for a municipal building. So I had my, I had my eyes on that space for something else. So I have that bias. When I looked at it, I was taken aback. That may just be me. When I have mentioned this concept without a lot of detail to just two or three people in town, I didn't get a lot of enthusiasm, but they haven't seen your information. So I'm trying to be, my first inclination when I saw this was this would probably not apply in the village of New Paltz. That was just my personal assessment. I haven't discussed that with, you know, anyone, but that was my first impression when I saw it, so just leave it at that.
Dennis?
Yeah. Well, first off, thank you for being interested in developing and bringing your money to the village. But like Don, I do wonder if this really fits the character, especially when we're talking about how tall these buildings are. You referred to the one half of the building being within six feet, I think, instead of the VLC. The other half of the building is taller than that, isn't it? The highest point of the building is how much taller than the VLC?
The highest point of the building? The highest point of the building is-
The whole project.
Of the entire project.
Correct.
Is shorter than the, you know, the gable end of that hall? The Vanderburgh Hall, the gable end, which has two towers, it's a, in brick, it's shorter than that. That's a-
It's also-
From grade, it's five feet above. It's the grade, the grade there is five feet above the grade here.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about a topic that was just completely absent from your presentation because we have a, an affordable housing law. So whether it's a rental property or a condominium, when you're building greater than ten units, you have to have ten percent of the units be offered as affordable housing. Has that been included in any of your initial concepts?
These units, I mean, we do have, we'd have to look and discuss that. I mean, these units are intended to be, you know, in keeping with the hotel in upper end. I'd have to talk to my client, and if that's something the board would want, ten percent of the units, we would look and see if we could-
It's a law, it's not something-
Well, we're asking you to change, you know, I mean, we're looking at, you know, changing some of the laws and, you know, and, you know, for the people laughing, I stood here with a full affordable housing project, you know, and that wasn't in the character of the village. So, you know, really, if you look at your zoning code, what's in the character, what you're going to see there is either that pit or a strip mall. You know, and so you can talk about or use taxpayer money to build a municipal building if you need it, but-
But I-
We'll see if we can accommodate it.
But it seems like what you're, you're asking us to consider reevaluating one law.
Right.
But we would also want to respect our existing affordable housing law.
Sure. You know, I would think we could-
I think that would be difficult to-
You know, consider setting some of the units, you know, for that.
Do we want to, as a board, comment a little bit more about whether this is a possibility in terms of the, you know, the idea of a project like this who is seeking a special use permit? Is that a possibility?
I would suggest, though, that this, that we have now enacted a two-meeting rule, and this is the first blush that we have at this, and I think we need to have further consideration of this before we do any action of any sort.
I think that's a, that's a, this is a great use of the two-meeting rule. Sleep on it.
Yeah, I'm not asking, we're not asking for a vote tonight. We would just, you know, as early in the process, like an indication, because we are asking you to do, you know, something different. And if the board wants us to go discuss this, you know, and do a similar presentation to the planning board and look for their input to guide you, we're certainly willing to do that.
Are you waiting for an indication from us before you pursue a pre-app with the planning board?
We could go pre-app with the planning board. No, I mean, if that's what you think is a good idea, we're happy to do that.
For you to pursue, you know, our conversation as well as-
Sure.
The pre-app route with the planning board in parallel.
Okay, that's certainly suitable, and we can-
Does anyone agree or disagree with that suggestion?
Yeah. And also, I just want to, going back to, I'm blanking on the name of the project at the time, but the-
Palladium?
Palladium, yes, Workforce Affordable Housing Project. It, at the time, it wasn't that the village board was opposed by any means to the project. There were technical issues, you know, related to Albany where there were, there were certain laws and provisions that the board would have had to almost prematurely act upon in order to get the funding that would be available from the state. And I'm sure you recall that that was what halted the project.
Yeah, I am just, but even that one required, and we were under time限制, but that required the, to consider that, that would have required a zone change as well. So I'm just thinking, under your existing zoning, there's probably not much you can do with that parcel, which is why it's, you know, been vacant so long. It's just, one way or another, if you want to see something in there other than building your own building, you're going to have to look at your zoning because it's just-
I'm ready to-
That's fine.
You have one more?
Clarify a question. I think I know the reason to it, but I'm going to ask it anyway. There's a part of our community that we're looking to develop. It's not necessarily the pit, it's the North Chesta Zone. Is this project designed site-specific? Would it be possible to move this some of the location in the village?
I think I'd say, yeah.
That's your question, is site-specific? Yeah, just because of the impact it will have in the congestion in street, the parking, the biggest impact it is going to have to the core village is to allow those cars off the main street and alleviate a lot of pressure where people congested, they don't know where to turn, it's hectic, and to use the public transportation that the village offers and even maybe create a shovel service so we minimize the amount of cars that are on the main street or obviously local backstreets. And keep all the cars underground, so it's being, and have a lot of pedestrian traffic and use public transportation. So this core area, because we work here, we know how it gets, if people seize it and everything, it gets crazy. We want to, we don't want to unpack that any further. We want to take away from that.
I have one question as a next question. Just wanted to find out if you would be seeking a pilot for this development?
We haven't even got to that. Obviously, the residential isn't permitted.
Well, I think there will be one pilot for the hotel, which is four eighty-five B. It's only taxes. And I'm not here to come and part the village with taxes. I'm here to make revenue for the village, so.
Well, I don't believe there's a pilot formula for a residential property, but I believe there is one for a hotel. So you're saying that's a possibility that you might-
I don't think that automatically applies to the hotel without, you know, you know, this is-
Well, it's a different program, but there's that. But we'll do a fiscal, what we'll do as part of, if we go forward, as part of the environmental review, is a fiscal analysis, and that will include the, because we frankly haven't done a full fiscal analysis, and that will include the tax revenues that will come to the town. And if an IDA break, because there's different kind of IDA breaks, it's not just real estate tax, there's sales tax exemptions and stuff that can help a project like this move forward, but that fiscal impact will identify what, if anything, we would go for, and you would be able to review it and you would see what the advantages or, you know, would be to the village.
I know the project includes several hundred parking spots for the hotel as well as the residential property, and you've kind of alluded to some parking that would be available to the public. Is that number of spots in play at all?
We're still on the process of designing how much parking would be assigned to the village and how much probably we need for the project in order to make it whole.
Do you have a range of what you might be considering as far as the number of spots that would be available for the public?
Yeah, maybe. The total's four hundred. The total is four hundred, so I would say, you know, between thirty to sixty.
Why, I can't, sorry, Luis.
Thirty to sixty, I think.
Thirty to sixty, publicly available spots? Okay. Anything else? We're good? Thanks, gentlemen.
I don't know.
Do you, this might be too early in the process that we'll answer this question, but where do you foresee getting the water for this project? Line, residents, and the hotel?
We'd have to examine the municipal water system, and that would be a study as well.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Yes.
So we were going to discuss, I know the second item was whether the village board wanted to also include the Q and A document about the water project. So our attorneys and engineers have created this several-question document that the town has adopted and included on their website along to, I guess the question for us is, do we want to also include that just for the sake of offering information, including it on the village website?
Make a comment on that. I've asked our attorneys both whether we need to claim the document in some form or way, and they have said, no, we don't, that we can post this as a public service so that it doesn't have to become an official document of the village, but it is, it's an offering of the village of information for the public. And we can state that on the poster, or we can say on it, we offer this as a public service.
So I'd like to make that as a motion that we're offering this document as a public service. This is not an officially endorsed village document. It's a document that's for folks to read and to hopefully answer questions.
And why wouldn't you want to have an official document? It's not that we don't, it's not that I want to, but if there were objections because you might feel that you need to go through each item and endorse it, it needn't be that. You need love every word. It's a public service, so.
Couple with evidence of oath?
So we have a motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
What was the motion, to post or not?
To post. As in focus. You're voting, man. Okay, so four yes, one no. Next item, discussion of, no, we're going to move on to the discussion of videotaping of the village board meetings, right? And Don was going to share some thoughts and comments.
Yeah, just a little history. Andrea Russo mentioned during public comment that she and I were involved in establishing the program to film public meetings and essentially extend that service to our community. I think it's worked well. I think there's a lot of people who get their primary information on government operations from either watching the meetings on YouTube or Channel twenty-three. And I was saddened that the last village board, when they made this decision to change over our system, didn't ask any questions of the expertise from the public access committee or the public access coordinator, and decided to end the videography services. When we presented to the village board twice over the years on this same question, we had recommended as a public access committee not to make the change, but the last board did not have that information because they hadn't asked the questions. There's two parts to what the public access coordinator role is, and this position was originally put out to bid. I know there were at least four interested parties, and the role was broken into two parts. One was videography services, the people that you see in the room filming the meetings. But the second was the public access coordinator role. And it involved things such as filming non-governmental events that might be of public interest, taking the meetings and transferring them to the box that uploads the video for Channel twenty-three, uploading the meetings to YouTube. It wasn't part of the charge, but as, as the time has moved on, a Facebook page was created as well for New Paltz Public Access. And so there's, there's a lot that happens beyond the actual filming of the meetings, and not through any bad intent, just through not having the information. I think when the decision was made to end the public access coordination services, those other- those other functions weren't taken into consideration. And, um, just as an example, when I went to see what the quality was and what the experience was from our last village board meeting, which was done by the automated system, um, it's not online yet, because we don't have the kinks worked out. There's no procedure to take the video from there and, and get the video, when it's done automatically, to the people who can upload it to the Channel 23 on YouTube. So my concern is that what usually happens when there's extra tasks involved with government or operations, um, those tasks fall to the office of the clerk. And I, um, I would not like to see that happen, uh, because it's a lot of work. And I guess, you know, the, the gentleman who is president of the company that's done the Public Access Coordination for years is here, if we have any questions about what that role is, but there's a lot of stuff involved in that. I don't think it's necessarily within the expertise of the clerk's office, and I don't think it, I think it involves a lot more time than we realize. So that's, that's the issue, and I want to make sure that we continue to have, if we're gonna automate the videography, we need to continue to make sure the other parts of the Public Access Coordination are covered in some way.
So this, this is my understanding of what, of what happened, is we were paying, as a, as a village, they're paying X number of dollars to have meetings videotaped and then distributed. And the former administration felt that there was an opportunity to save money by, by automating the system. And unfortunately, it seems something was overlooked, in that it's not just a matter of eliminating a, a human cameraman, but there were other tasks that, that, that organization provided to the village. So now, instead of a, a human cameraman, we have a mechanical cameraman, um, but now we have no one performing the distribution of this content.
Yep.
So it seems like the ship has sailed, we're, we're stuck with these, this mechanical cameraman, and we still have a need to distribute the content. So what I'm wondering, could we go back to the folks that we've worked with in the past and say, you guys have helped distribute our content in the past, could you give us a price for taking the, the, the mechanical cameraman's content and distributing it? It, it seems like that's what we're, we're left with now. And does that look like a reasonable summary?
There's a couple other issues involved, and one of it is, uh, there's only one single Channel 23, so there's two modulators, one in the town, the community center, and one here. And when one is live, the other one is not. And for one thing, I don't even know if you have this up then to the modulators, so you cannot allow that. So I don't know, no one ever talks about this. We would have helped you figure it out.
I, I, I'm...
Sorry, can you just clarify, because I, I'm a little confused. So USIA Video is hired to do two separate things, they happen to be in the same business, you know, the bids were, were presented and accepted separately. Uh, one is the videography and one is the program coordination. And the program coordinator coordinates the shared channel, so, so the, the cost was split between the town and the village, so that, you know, one entity could oversee sharing the use of the channel. So I'm not sure if the decision was made to just, you know, like, not fund the videography, but to continue with the program coordinator...
That may have been the intention of the past court. I, I think it's, it's also important that we, we clarify that, that this is a, a new arrangement that this current board has inherited, and we're trying to understand, uh, what, what capabilities we have with this hardware that we purchased, and what, what capabilities may be missing.
I think it's unfortunate that Deputy Mayor left, because she was the coordinator in this whole process, and so some of us may have been ignorant about some of the factors that were left out of consideration, but if she were here, she might be able to explain those. And this is, again, the first time we're in a discussion of this. I don't, I don't want to pretend that I know all of the factors that led to something not happening whilst we were presented with what seemed like a very reasonable option to make something happen.
Okay. What, what I would like to do is, um, we will encourage Deputy Mayor Rotsler to, um, help us understand what, what, how the decision came to be in the past, and, um, we can discuss it at our next meeting, and, and it seems like we might need to, um, reengage USIA and ask them to come up with a plan for us to, uh, what was the phrase used, Andrea? It was like, not the videographer, but the other piece? Public access coordination. Public access, we need a public access coordinator. That seems like that is what is appropriate.
You need a program coordinator, and, and, you know, if you looked at your budget, they were, they were, they were almos, too, so you might have budgeted for the program coordinator, I don't know, but, um...
Yeah, you, you have, there's two separate lines, and you divided to the town, and it set up years ago, over six months, the town phase, and six months ago, okay? And you're into your six months right now.
Don, do you want to help us, um, look at what, uh, you know, how we budgeted for this in the past?
Yep.
Or can you work with, with our clerk? Because I think you, you probably will, will understand what we're after, and then Katie can, can help identify the information that we need.
Yeah, I think...
So let's try to figure out what we've paid for in the past, what we're saving with an automated cameraman, and, you know, those are the next steps.
Be helped from USIA would be a list of what it is you do.
Have you actually seen the video or heard the sound of the noise?
I have. The, the sound is outstanding. The, the picture itself, the picture itself is, I wouldn't, I wouldn't categorize it as outstanding, it'd be at least the sound is outstanding.
Is that from live, the live sound over Channel 23 is outstanding?
We haven't tried to go live over Channel 23.
Okay, because you will find that that is very different from rebroadcasting, I believe, that, because you're at the mercy of time winners.
So Katie, can you, can you put that as a, as a question?
Let's work together and get back to the next meeting.
That would be great, yeah. There is a copy of the last meeting in your mailbox for your room there, because you weren't here, so we just happened to run you over.
Right. And, and I, I also think it's incredibly important that the, like, in addition to the, the meetings being live, they need to be available on YouTube or Facebook the next morning, which is, you know, I think everyone in this community has gotten used to.
Absolutely. It was, it was an unusual circumstance at the last meeting. It was not, um, the, the letter that was written to USAI, USIA, please, I'm so sorry, um, did not discontinue our service since September. We had anticipated having someone here. As it turns out, that person accidentally wasn't here, so we weren't prepared to use our video the next day, so that's why it was, it's, we were still working on our bugs when we just happened to have that backup.
Okay, so we have, we have Katie, and Rebecca, and Don, all looking at this...
We'll get Bertie next meeting.
You're gonna get back to us next meeting. Okay, so let's jump to the next item, discussion.
Okay, um, I have a question. I'm here for, I don't like to, but I'm here for item number 11. Is there any way that you can maybe push that up?
Um, I don't, you know, I, I don't actually know, like, what are the next few items that we have?
We still have, um, number H, which is the, the resolution...
Yeah.
...provided by the attorney. We have a briefing by building planning to update the county-led multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation. We have a discussion on the proposed amendment for two, excuse me, we removed that, the discussion on the planning board's review of...
Okay, so I know where we are. So we're gonna do this resolution, and then, um, we'll move NBR up, just so we...
Sure.
Is that okay with everyone?
Sure. Yes.
Um, so we have a resolution here, a resolution of the village board, of the village of New Paltz, according to the application of Valentina Suarez to re-enter the United States from the country of Colombia. So the reason that our board is doing this is because Valentina and her American-born husband and American-born children are all in the, in contract and purchasing a home in the village of New Paltz, and, um, she is, um, because of a complicated immigration matter in Bogota, Colombia, and the U.S. Embassy in Colombia is not permitting her to re-enter. So I can read the final resolution. "The village board hereby supports all efforts of Valentina Suarez to regain lawful admittance to the U.S., where she has resided with her husband and children for many years, and is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby directed to forward certified copies of this resolution to all local, state, and federal government representatives, with a written request that said representatives communicate with both the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services and the U.S. Council General of Colombia to expedite the re-entry process on behalf of Ms. Suarez." So we have a, do we want to discuss that before we do our roll call?
Does the rule move in second?
You have to move it.
I move.
Okay.
Second.
You have second?
Yep, second.
Is it swaying this one?
Um, I'm just pronouncing, uh, I don't know how to pronounce the last name.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Okay, Mayor Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Kirk?
Aye.
Trustee Rocka?
Aye.
Trustee Young?
Aye.
I'd like to show that there were four ayes and one absent.
Okay. So we can move on.
Motion, aye.
So the next item, discussion of planning board review of proposed NBR zoning text. I'd like to give a, a, a quick background, this is something that the combined planning board and village board committee have been working on for a while. The previous administration worked very hard to, uh, change the intent and purpose for the, the B3 or the North Chestnut District, so it would be multi-story and mixed use, any new development should be multi-story and mixed use. And there was some conflicting information, um, the way the legislation was originally written, and we had some amazing volunteer efforts from several individuals on our planning board and village board to try to clean that up, and we worked with our planning board attorney. There is one remaining issue that needs to be sorted out, the, um, the map of this district has been a little bit unclear, and I personally believe that the, the previous administration had identified which properties should be included in this district, and the, the former planner at the time had identified which properties should be included in this district, and I'm very comfortable not second-guessing the, the reasons that they used to, to, to identify which property should be included in the district. All we were trying to do with our review of that legislation was to eliminate the conflicting information, where we are requiring any new development to be multi-story mixed use. And that's kind of a, a quick update there, so that's gonna go back to the planning board, um, and our, our planner, David Gilmore, is, is, is working on that, and then the next step would be for our board to review that final version and to also send that to the, to the county, like I said, um, so there are, are a few additional steps.
As well as if you're ready to set a hearing.
And, and, right, so it would be our review and then our setting of a public hearing, so are we, could we, um, set a public hearing tonight?
For the night?
Or just in the future?
Do you have a specific, a specific date and time, or is that...
I, I realize that, but, but are we ready to do that while we're, while we're waiting just for a, a final review of the map by the planning board?
So you have a zoning text before you, and then there's a, a confirmation of zoning quick, zoning district footprint, that you'd like to have the larger area affirmed by the planning board, so you could, it seems that you could go forward with the narrative and the footprint contingent upon that confirmation and dialogue with the planning board.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing on what Mr. Gilmore just described for the ninth.
So it'd be fifteen days for noticing a zoning public hearing, according to your local law, so...
So that doesn't give us fifteen days? So then we would have to wait until the sixteenth, which would be our next meeting.
And the question becomes, does, does the footer staff have the mechanical capacity to notice with fifteen days? Are we able to hit the sixteenth of September?
Not with using local legislature, we could if we used the Kingston Freeman, which is the alternate paper as private reorg, but at this date, um, if we gave the information in time for the next publication, it would be the thirteenth, uh, the third of September, and the public hearing on the sixteenth.
That's fine, so I, I don't mind using the Freeman, that, that's exactly why we, we have that arrangement.
We can absolutely leave that then.
Okay, so we have a motion, Don seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a public hearing set.
Thank you.
Next issue is a briefing by planner David Gilmore on the county-led multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
My...
Do you want, you have a question? I don't mind, yeah.
Um, I guess the question I had relates to the footprint, as you just said, the, the prior administration had created, overlaid the zoning district, the properties in the village that resided along the Thursday corridor, some of whom are, were in the R2 district, the others were in the B3, but the ones that were in the R2, the original intent was to create, you know, I'm better to, because you have the major arterial there, the fat retail, and housing on, over R2 than in the B3. With your intent, I guess, I'm asking to leave that be?
I, I'm sorry if it wasn't clear, because I, I feel the previous administration, the previous planner, had identified the, the properties, um, both in the, the R2 and the B3.
Aye.
So I'm not, I'm not interested in second-guessing the work that they did. I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the properties that they identified to be in this new district, which we're now calling NBR.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you, Jonathan.
Um, so David Gilmore has the floor.
Thank you. I'm the village planner, David Gilmore, and a task assigned, the building inspector was being representative for the village of New Paltz within the process of updating the Ulster County Hazard Mitigation Plan. In 2009, Ulster County received funding from FEMA and New York State Emergency Management to develop an all-hazard plan. Essentially, there's a number of, there's a variety of types of hazards that a community can be exposed to, but which you can mitigate. You can take the action proactively to try to prevent the adverse impacts of natural or human disasters. For example, we here in New York, many of us, of course, are aware of the Hurricane Irene and Lee incident, Superstorm Sandy, right? Which was, in a sense, a flood disaster and a, a significant rain event, a tropical storm. Wind hazards, flood hazards, forest fires, there's a variety of different types of hazards, all of which are, most of which are especially... all of which are, most of which, especially natural hazards, are addressed within the 2009 hazard plan. Fast forward five years later, Ulster County again is developing a multi-jurisdictional. It's not just Ulster County, it's Ulster County and participating municipalities. So, I'm making the Village Board aware that I've been working with the building inspector to formulate project worksheets, which we're submitting to Ulster County. It's led by the Department of Ulster County, Department of Emergency Management, I guess? I should know the group in Ulster County. I can look that up if I may. I'm sorry, I don't have that. So, in essence, with the New York Rising Framework, where there was federal and state resources allocated to plan, for example, flood resilience in the wake of the major storm disaster, one of the things that building and planning had done is submitted worksheets mimicking the variety of projects around flood resiliency in the New York Rising Community Reconstruction Plan for Ulster County. I think approximately seven projects that we've developed based on that document. So, I'm updating the board that we've submitted worksheets for flood resiliency. There's also been some worksheet, one of them was, in our region, and I would generally speaking, I'm characterizing that we have some earthquake risk, and so we have developed a worksheet for possibility of a dam failing based on earthquake or other natural event, natural hazard events such as severe rainstorm and possibility of liquefaction or hub dam or surcharge of a dam or impoundment. And then, we're also programming recommendations for how we'll continue, besides tonight briefing you on this hazard plan, but building, supported by planning, will continue to participate in this process, which will be through Ulster County. So, there were materials in your packet, and I'm briefing you that we've been identifying projects and we're bringing them to Ulster County.
Great, thanks. Any questions?
I just want to know what the responsibility that we... We, for example, we, you and I, very recently did some training on emergency preparedness. Is there a link between emergency preparedness training and multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plans?
It's an excellent question. And clearly, the hazard plan presents the various probabilities and types of hazards that can happen, including ways, especially that a hazard mitigation plan presents ways that we can qualify for funding, hopefully, through the hazard plan, and then try to proactively set up our best ways to avoid the worst effects if there is a natural hazard or another hazard event. A local emergency planning process, where you're working on the process of having chains of command and methods of communication and response during a hazard event, they fit together. They fit together like, look, one's a social process and a method of response, and in a sense, the hazard planning is also some of the physical and social planning that you're setting up beforehand, so that if there's an event like the forest fire in the west, hopefully, we're minimizing the event. And I might as well also make sure to emphasize, since I didn't put it on the agenda, I spoke to your Village Board last week, we also have, excuse me, two weeks ago, we also have the upcoming community meeting on flood hazard resilience in conjunction with the U.S. EPA Technical Assistance Project for Flood Health or Resilience, and that'll be on Thursday evening. I think it's the Thursday evening, September 17th. That'll be at 7:00 p.m., and tentatively is here unless I find a little bit bigger room based on an anticipated larger response.
Thank you.
So, please, the public's invited and encouraged to attend that.
So, as these hazards are identified, they'll be communicated to the Village Board?
So...
I don't remember seeing a list that scared me recently, so I...
So, I encourage members of the community and your planner and the building department are prepared to verse you in the 2009 hazard plan, looks at things like, as I said, tornado, wildfire, flood, these various potential hazards. Now, that data is, all that compendium of data and risk assessment that's in that, and that the hazard plan is being reformulated, but then also the communities are participating, helping locally identify needs and interests, and hopefully, therefore, not only setting up resiliency and mitigation, but also qualifying for leveraged fund of, excuse me, leveraged federal assistance to do things like help flood-proof buildings or help reinforce facilities like our wastewater treatment plant. So, in the event of flood, we've got high walls so that the wastewater treatment plant doesn't get inundated by water and can continue to operate, also maybe because it has electric generators within those impoundments and above. So, trying to minimize the potential of that. And so, with the, presumably, we are asking some questions of the county to confirm process and timeline. It's a fairly rapid timeframe. It's important that we're participating as a municipality, including communicating with the public about opportunities for input as well as ways that they can learn about the plan. But if, for example, there are further opportunities for public input and feedback, we'll keep you briefed as best we can.
All right, so there is a document I can refer to now?
So, there's the 2009 Existing Hazard Plan. At this stage, we're identifying local needs and interests, and presumably, that's just... There will be another plan coming out, the update of that plan. I just don't know some of the interim process.
Okay.
And I wasn't directly involved in some of that.
No problem. Thanks.
Okay, the next item I had, and then tell me if I'm wrong, Katie, is discussion of whether the Village will donate to the construction of a Community 9/11 Memorial.
That is the first item under the old business. However, under new business, we still have the discussion about the fee schedule. The information provided by Andrea Russo.
Okay, one at a time. So, fee schedule. We have a new building inspector who's doing a very good job of taking a look at our fee schedule and making sure that fees are being collected. He identified a fee that had not been collected. So, the way it works is we have rental properties in this village are inspected annually. So, depending on the size of the property, there is a different fee. Our new building inspector identified an additional fee that is referred to in our code, and it was a dollar amount per tenant in each building. I spoke with our building inspector, and we spoke with our attorney about this fee, and then, and the fee schedule that our board had adopted actually set that fee at $100 per tenant. I generally have a great deal of trouble charging fees based on tenants. So, for instance, if you had a rental property with four units in it, you could have one tenant per unit, or you could have a couple in each unit. So, you could have four people in your four-unit building, or eight people in your four-unit building. So, this fee would then be $400 or $800, and I...
And if you had a baby?
Right. Right, there's no age restriction, so the baby, you know, so the baby would also cost. And I'm a huge proponent of setting our building department up for success. I want them to be able to clearly identify what fees are due, clearly explain to property owners what fees is expected of them. We need to make sure that the process makes sense. And I also feel like the way it is structured with this fee that our new building inspector identified, we're, in essence, double-dipping. So, we're already charging per unit, a fee per unit, and now we're also charging for tenants. So, one of the things that the previous administration did, which is very valuable and an important move in the right direction in terms of better process, they removed dollar amounts in the code and put them on a separate fee schedule. So, there's... That's valuable for several reasons, because it allows our board to look at that fee schedule and compare fees to each other. There's one centralized location to understand how much we're collecting for a variety of issues. The other advantage is that if we need to change a fee, we're not creating new legislation. So, in this instance, I think for a few of the reasons that I've identified, I would like to continue to charge rental properties a fee based on their number of units, but I would like to remove this fee where we're charging owners of rental properties a per-tenant fee. It... And the way I believe we should do that, because now that we have this mechanism of a separate fee structure, is we just move that fee from $100 per tenant to $0 per tenant. And I think in additional detail, that it's important to highlight here, is even though this was in the code, it was not being collected. So, all we're doing is just fixing the fee schedule so it's more clear to property owners, so it's more clear for our building department officials.
So, can you make it match the process that we currently have in place already?
Right. And that's not to say, I also have an interest in actually changing how we levy fees. I'm not a fan of per-unit fees. I think that fees should probably be charged based on square footage. That would also work in the direction of making the process more clear for property owners, making the process more clear for our building department officials and code enforcement folks. But that, we will discuss at a later date after we... After we research that topic and see what is the fairest rate on a per-square-foot basis, whether it's a commercial property or a residential property. But for tonight, I would just like to...
I was just going to make the motion. But there might be more discussion?
Go ahead, go ahead. Any more discussion?
Before you make the motion, if anybody on this board would be charged those fees, should they be sitting out this vote?
I am charged, because I have a rental property in the village, so I am charged annual inspection fees. So, I could volunteer to recuse myself, but I feel like the way most choices to recuse oneself is if you feel like there's a financial bias. I don't feel like I have any financial bias at all in terms of making this decision.
It's not like you were getting charged this in the first place anyway, so it's not like you're saving any money, I just, in the...
Right.
As far as being process-oriented.
No, I like, I like the idea of, you know, being extra-transparent in terms of disclosures and, you know, there's an ethics board in the town where it's required that anyone serving on an elected board or an appointed board, you have to disclose anything that you own in New Palt. I have no problem saying that I have a rental property and I have to, or I'm part owner of a small rental property with four units, and I am required to pay into that annual inspection.
Might I say, I think the most important factor here, from my point of view, and I don't own anything except my own little home across the street, is that this is, we're voting to retain the current practice. We're voting to make no change, because there happened to be an item in the code that hadn't been addressed when we were addressing all of the other fees. So, whether you recuse yourself or not, I'm prepared to say we should continue doing what we've been doing.
So, along those lines, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the currently uncollected per-tenant fee to, from $100 to zero?
Second it.
Seems like we have an American version of the Chinese one-child policy. You have another child, another hundred bucks to the village, you know?
Right. So, I'm gonna, well, I feel like, you know, we're going to have to make several decisions along these lines. I don't think it really makes sense for me to recuse myself in this vote, because this is what I was elected to do.
Yeah, there's no financial conflict of interest.
Well, there is a, there is a, there is a potential financial conflict, but I feel like if I'm disclosing that there could be a potential conflict, you know, that's the most important thing.
There's a big difference between an actual and a potential conflict, so...
So, appreciate the way you've handled it. Thank you.
So, we have a motion on the table? We have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we have adjusted that fee schedule. Sorry, Katie, so you, just give me, give me one at a time, right?
Sure. Now, you would like to accept the resignation with regret for Andrea Russo?
Absolutely. So, Andrea, thank you for your service as the EPC Secretary. I know everyone, you know, we saw a thread of emails with the people who were on the EPC who were incredibly thankful of your contribution, so thanks very much.
Here, here. Yeah. I would just observe as past chair that Andrea was more than a secretary and really, you know, a really contributing member of the group, and I don't think we could have accomplished all the many things we accomplished without her being there. And, oh, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Cleo. In your email that you discussed your placement, but you also have added to the table of planning and zoning, I don't know if you are planning and zoning secretary, I don't know if you hope that the planning and zoning secretary might take that on, or the topless can take that on?
Right.
I'm just going by the email.
Absolutely. So, it seems like the direction that we are headed in, in terms of having someone help with the secretary responsibilities of the EPC, we'd be using individuals from the clerk's office. So, that's where we're headed at this moment. Additionally, we'll be announcing publicly that the Village will be looking to hire a new planning and zoning secretary. It's the same job description that was hired for in the past.
Do you want a motion to advertise with that position?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we advertise or publicly announce that we're looking for a new planning and zoning secretary, if you want a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, what was next under new business, Katie? Did you have something?
The volunteer booth at the SUNY.
Right, so I would like to make a motion that we, so, work with the EPC, work with Village staff to make sure that we have a table at the Volunteer Fair at SUNY on 9/11. I think there may be a, some cost, but the representative said, from SUNY also said that they would work with us as well, but I think that's a worthwhile thing. The current EPC chair said that the researchers are very valuable to that commission. So, all in favor of moving forward with making sure that we have a table presence at the Volunteer Fair?
Aye.
Right.
And the last item under new business, the comments from Trustee Kerr regarding the local?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I've been asking over and over again during this process for any written documentation, any, anything in writing that would, you know, that would shed some light on the decisions that were taken. And I did receive, and I think Tim was copied, but the board hasn't seen, some information from, there was a, I guess it was in 2007, when the town was looking at relocating the police department. police department, there was a committee formed, had a bunch of meetings over a long period of time, and came out with some recommendations. That committee was comprised of three of the same five, three of the members of the current building committee looking at municipal building were also members, and the two chairs were the same in this earlier, earlier process. And I, we talked about this last meeting, Tim, you weren't here. I've been struck by, some of the presentations we've had to the village board have stressed looking at the current Veterans Drive site where the current town hall is, and also looking at the village site. And I kind of had come to the last meeting expecting to look into the village site and talk about that a bit, and I know...
Did you say the last meeting, which last meeting?
Our last village board meeting where you were away.
Yeah.
But before that meeting, when I went to the building committee meeting, they once again shut me down and said, you know, this village site is not an option. It's gotta be Veterans Drive and the current town hall site or nothing. And I, I, when we have our joint meeting to discuss this, I don't want anyone to be surprised, and I'm gonna revisit the issue of also considering the, either the current village hall site or the pit. Just two pages from a PowerPoint that were given by the previous committee, three-fifths of the members are the same as the current one. The guidelines included that the facilities be as close as possible to the center of the town and have, if at all possible, access to municipal sewer and water. And they actually recommended a specific site after their months of meetings and discussions, and that site happened to be the pit. And we just heard a proposal today, an alternate use to the pit. But I would just restate my personal feeling that it's really the ideal location for a municipal hall, town, village, police courts would be in the center of the community. And I was pleasantly surprised to see that a community, a committee, after months of effort, had come to the same conclusion. So I just don't want anyone to be surprised when I bring that up again. It may not please everyone to hear it, but just wanted to give you all a heads up.
Anything else or any other comments? I don't mind reiterating why I'm very much in favor of combined municipal center at the Veterans Drive site. I feel like from a fiduciary responsibility point of view, this is a valuable piece of property, the pit is a valuable piece of property. I would prefer to see ratables on properties like this in the core of our community. And I feel like the Veterans Drive site is certainly not as close to the cornerstone, PMG's, you know, that intersection of Platacal and Main Street as, you know, the difference between this location and the Veterans Drive location, but to me, it's still close to the village's core. And, you know, the idea of building something in the pit, where would that money come from? The other reason that I like the Veterans Drive site is because it's, we currently own it, both village and town taxpayers. It's an awkward property, it's a rectangle, it has a right-of-way through it to access the residential neighborhood in the back. So if you were to build something here, you're not taking advantage of the fact that these are valuable pieces of property that could generate more tax revenue, and then you would be selling an awkward piece of property at Veterans Drive. I think you really have to look at things in aggregate, you know, what is in the best interest of the taxpayers? That's kind of my take on the difference between the sites and why you would consider the Veterans Drive site over our current village hall site or the pit. And I think if we were to sell this property, I believe it would be a great idea to make it conditional on whatever is developed here, that includes X number of municipal spots, that X amount of the space continues to be open and park-like. I think that would be a great way to serve and enhance our community, where you could turn this property into something that is generating tax revenue, but then continues to provide, provide open space.
And I think there's, so, two responses to that, because I, you know, you've made that opinion clear a couple times, so I've thought about it. And I, just before I left the school board and just before you joined, we had what I thought was a pretty nifty idea to purchase some property out by Lenape where there is currently a historic home there. And because of the various laws, the current property owner would not be able to subdivide that property and separate the home from the acreage behind it. And the plan for the school district was looking at this from a fiduciary standpoint as a real estate thing. If the school district could buy that whole parcel and separate and just sell the house, and the case we made to the community, we can make some serious real estate money on this, which can finance things for the school district and also pick up the property. The feedback I think that I got personally and that the Board of Education got is that boards and commissions should not be in the real estate business. You know, I understand you see some value in this property, but I don't think we should be looking at this question from a profit and loss standpoint. But if we were, the sale of this property could potentially finance the purchase of the pit. And the other point that I would make is I have a different view of the Veterans Drive site. I think a mixed-use project there would be ideal because of the access to the pool. I think people would want to, would want to move into residential space that had access to the pool. And I think that property could actually be a cornerstone of that new district. I think a project that we heard about for the pit would be, would be great in that location for the same reasons that I personally don't think it'd be great for the pit. So we'll debate this, we have some time.
Sounds good. Okay. Next topic.
Now you've moved on to the old business, number 14, discussion of the village's building, fire and building construction.
Right, and we received an opinion from planning board attorney, and he explained to us that his research indicates that the village cannot donate taxpayer funds to a fire company or veterans organization for a monument or a veterans memorial according to New York State comptroller's opinion. So something we can do there?
Well, there is something we can do. I think the opinion is that we could purchase something and donate to something we purchased. If we were to purchase a, you know, a component that was envisioned for that location, we could purchase it as a village and donate the property while we can't donate, we can't donate money. So when I read that opinion, I saw that there is a way to go there. We just, we would need to find out from the planners of that memorial, what do you have envisioned for that location that, that might cost around $500? And we, the village could purchase that and donate the property for the site. So that's just a way we can get...
Does someone want to look into that, explore what Don's suggesting?
I will. I'll find out from the players if there's something they...
Just ask Will Frank if this is an explicit step that we can take.
Sure.
Can we take this step?
Okay, so let's put that on the next meeting, for the next agenda. Don's gonna report back to us. Is there another way that we can contribute and does the project actually have something that we could buy if we are indeed allowed to contribute?
One other follow-up question, maybe if we, whether or not we can contribute a physical item if we're allowed to help fundraise, even if we're not physically giving the money, are we allowed to help raise the money?
Yeah, I think the other...
No, I know this is a different time, the village cannot help.
So old business, or we move it on to?
Number 15.
Number 15?
We don't have anything new to add on this.
Nothing new?
Well, it's got to say something new to it.
Well, Tom and I discussed this, and really it was a very token gesture for new businesses. And the conclusion I came to, and I believe Tom came to as well, was that we were more likely to upset existing business owners than really offering anything substantial to new businesses coming in. And where we're both very much in support of doing what we can for new businesses coming in, this is such a token gesture that it's probably not worth pursuing because we're just gonna upset what we already have.
So we're gonna table this indefinitely?
Or kill it?
Yeah, I wouldn't say table it, that's kind of misleading. We didn't want to do this at the last meeting while you were in Peru, this is something that you brought up and we figured we, you know, go over it while you're...
I love this idea, you guys killed it. Okay, so it's done. So then the final item, there's just one remaining item, correct?
Discussion of parking at Elting Avenue, Hasbrook Avenue, and New Palls.
Did you guys discuss this at the last meeting? Because for me, this is a simple fix and it's something that we need to do because...
Yeah, I think we did discuss, didn't we? And I was in conversation with Blue about moving, well, let's see, let's see if I can recall what we, what we came to here. He said that we had just deferred for a time, changing some of the signs, and that they were on a schedule to be changed.
That's not my understanding of what's going on.
That's not your understanding?
No. This is, this is, this is what I see. We have metered parking around Hasbrook and the meters, however much it costs, the meters are in effect from 9:00 to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. So you can park in any metered spot on Sundays, right? Is that your take as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have sections of Elting and Hasbrook with...
Two Elting.
Two other types of sign. No, well, Hasbrook, I went and took pictures of these signs this afternoon. So Hasbrook has a sign, it has two signs next to each other that conflict with each other. One sign says, "No parking from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. except Saturday, Sunday, and holidays." And then the other sign said that there's no parking except Saturday and Sunday holidays. So one part of Hasbrook, you can overnight park, and the other part of Hasbrook, you cannot. And what I think we need to do, and this would also fix the Elting Ave...
The church.
Parking spots and the Hasbrook parts, is that everything in that whole area over there, everything around the park, whether it's a two-hour parking spot or a metered parking spot, you can park overnight anywhere. But you, you cannot, you cannot park there, or you could, the parking rules are only in effect Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Because as it stands now, you can't park there starting at 9:00 to midnight. And that's the way the sign reads, and it's not being enforced. Like, I want to see uniformity everywhere, so everywhere you go, you know what to expect. So it's not confusing to residents.
May I ask, were the conflicting signs there all this time, or were there new signs put up?
Both.
To rectify a situation that we were requiring, but have now again created a conflict?
It's both, because the north side of Hasbrook has two conflicting signs, and all of the signs on Elting conflict with the metered spots around the park.
And are the signs then reflective of the decisions made by this board, or are they confusing because someone was confused?
I'm confused by that.
Exactly.
Well, someone might have thought we wanted to do something, whether adding up new signs, put the new signs in next to the old signs, thereby creating more confusion when we did not demand or require them.
We basically have four different types of parking rules around that park, four different types of rules. I want two types of rules, one that's metered and one that's two-hourd. But they all, they're all, it's very simple to fix.
Can you and Blue just walk around the block and decide?
If you want to give me, if you want to give me authorization to go fix this, I can do it, I know exactly what we need to do.
I authorized the mayor to fix this situation.
Okay. Go ahead, Katie.
Rules laws?
You may have to pass legislation in order to iron some of the stuff.
Well, at least Blue and I can come up with a plan.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I don't mean physically take the signs down with a screwdriver, but tell us what we need to do and we'll...
All right, I'll take the sign project on.
That's why I want to find, you know, did we in fact do something that, did we pass legislation that confused this issue, or did we pass legislation that we wanted to clarify the issue and then the clarification was misconstrued?
No, the former, the former board made it more confusing. With that two-hour for the rest of, for 24 hours a day, it's two, I mean, that's how the Elting Avenue signs read, two-hour parking for 24 hours a day. That's not the way they should do it.
And if you were to be a church-going person and got there early for Sunday school and stayed after the service, that would have to take more than two hours.
You would technically be in violation.
Yeah. We don't want to penalize people who go to church.
And those very same points were brought up at this very same table in discussion given.
We have a plan.
We'll get there.
We got a plan.
We'll get there.
One other, I forgot to add this to, so that we have nothing left on the agenda, correct? I wanted to add one other thing, just an update. So I guess I'm doing this now in other discussion?
Well, it's an announcement, you can make an announcement.
It's an announcement, yeah, because it's not requiring any action. I don't know if any, if anyone else has noticed this, but several weeks ago, there was a water leak on 208 headed south at the corner of 208 and Main. And when I noticed it, I called Blue, and in typical Blue fashion, he already knew about it, and they had a plan to deal with it. And there was a half a day where traffic was closed and they opened up the road, and Blue reported back to me that they felt they, they found a problem, because this is, this is a lot of aging infrastructure, so they found some infrastructure that was failing. They put that in, they closed up the hole, and then it kept leaking. So I spoke about it with Blue again, and he's like, "Yeah, we're really confused right now, what's going on? We're gonna continue to monitor it and try to figure out what the problem is." So I'm happy to report that they now have a game plan and they have ordered parts to fix what they believe is the, you know, that will help this, this problem and sort it out once and for all. So it's, it's a trial and error thing, they fixed one problem and it seems like they've now identified another problem and, you know, they're on it. So that leaking water situation at that corner will hopefully be resolved soon.
And I go to, I'm a member of the Water, Wastewater Equipment Manufacturing Association, and our meetings twice a year, this issue of aging infrastructure is not limited to New Palls, it's nationwide, and it's, you know, it's a ticking time bomb. Our DPW seems to be particularly good and on top of the situation, the consent order's helping us out, but this is a, you know, this is a big issue nationwide.
I can share, you know, because as a, as a new, a new mayor, I'm learning how this works, and it's interesting when the, when a problem is identified, what they, what they generally do is they go, our DPW goes in and fixes it immediately with the parts that they have on hand, because often there are specialty parts that need to be ordered. So what they try to do is deal with it right away and get the street back online so as not to disrupt traffic. So they're very mindful of, A, trying to sort something out right away, and B, making sure it's as least disruptive as possible, and then they wait for the new... And then they wait for the new part to come in, and then go in and fix it. So, you know, they're very mindful of...
Just seeing what's been done on Platteville, where they'd open up the road, dig it up, and have it closed by the evening, you know, every day. It was just a really impressive job.
So, all right, that's all I had. That was just kind of an update for all of us and for the public.
Move that way adjourned.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
This was the article that I was referring to.
Oh, from that one?
It's about why broadband matters. And what can we do to get better service in this age?
In where?
In our village.
Yeah, I think that's a good economic...